Okay, we are live and we are recording. We'll start the meeting with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Set to wall, can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from January 20th, 2022? Seiko, second from? Andy, any changes, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizens comments, we have nobody that signed up to talk. Move on to trustees comments. We'll start with Andy.
Agenda items only.
Okay, move on to Mark Wilder. Now, I'll put Mark last. We'll go to Megan.
Like, sorry, just the agenda for me.
All right, Ruth Seiko.
Just the agenda, thank you.
Okay, Mike Shepard?
I'm gonna call a brief executive session for a police personal matter and other than that, I'll stay with the agenda.
All right. Okay. Very good, thanks Mike. Bruce?
I'm gonna stick to the agenda items, except I wanna forewarn the board that I'm reworking water rates and I'll be sending them some figures for their review, so down the road, we can decide where we want to go.
Very good, thank you, sir. And Mark Wilder?
Last but not least, you had me going there. I was, I was actually ready to talk.
I'm sorry.
I will, I will request an executive session. I wouldn't want to have this be my last board meeting and not request that. So I'll keep it brief, but other than that, just the agenda items. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. Just wanna let the public know, we've, we've handed out a couple of times, and I know that both towns have, we've used Canton Woods for handing out test kits and masks. If you want, everybody is entitled to free test kits from the federal government. If you go on a site called covidtests.com, sign up, you give them your address, and they send you four for your family. So that if you weren't able to get any at any of our giveaways, or if you've used them and you need more, there is a place to go. And again, it's covidtests.com. Just wanna remind people that the election is March 15th. Some of you may have had people come to the door with petitions. It is legitimate. We have four positions up. So don't be surprised if somebody knocks on your door. It's a very difficult time for people to be going door to door with COVID. Last night was supposed to have been a mayor's meeting. It was going to be at the waste treatment plant on Hiawatha Boulevard. WEP was putting it on. And about noon yesterday, I noticed when I was not signed up to go, but a notice came out that it was canceled because Shannon Hardy and her assistant both had COVID, as did everybody else in their office. So that they, they had to postpone them, cancel, whatever. So for those people who would, would tell you that the current COVID is nothing more than sniffles, it may be for some people, but it hasn't been for everybody. You know, we've known people that have been quite sick. And obviously, I don't know how sick the people at WEP are, but they were sick enough to cancel the meeting. I, I sent a message back to the mayor's group. Aren't you glad you got this before you went to that meeting? Because otherwise, two thirds of the mayors in Anadog County would have been at that meeting, and they would have all been sick. So it is worth taking care. There is a new support group. I've been approached by somebody to try to get, give it a little publicity and put it on our website under our resource line. It's, it's alzheimerssupport.com/memorycare/newyork. It's a free service for people in Baldwinsville who may have somebody who is been hit with Alzheimer's and they need help, they need suggestions on where to get help. We will post this on our resource line. I will post it on our Facebook page. You know, it's, it's another tough one, dealing with Alzheimer's. And it's nice to know that there are agencies out there. And I'm guessing because it's Alzheimer's and typically seniors, that if you called the senior center, Ruth or whoever would have a link to something like this too. And so please take advantage of it. We do have some events currently going on and coming up that COVID has not yet affected. It's Dining's Week in the Village. Eighteen different establishments are offering specials through February 6th, February 6th. A lot of restaurants, but also there's a, Jesse Cakes is involved. A few of those type of things, but just about every restaurant and pizza place in the village is involved. If you're interested in, you, there is a website for Beeville Dining Weeks. Go on Facebook, there's a link, and all the restaurants have links on their websites and on their Facebook sites. And so what they do is typically every week, they change the menu for the special for Dining Weeks, and you get a three course meal, and you can order alcohol with it to be delivered, picked up, whatever, go in and eat. It's a nice touch, and it helps the local businesses really picks up their business for over a span of three weeks. Also, this weekend, Saturday, nine to two, at the Volunteer Center, which is at the Lysander Town Hall. The Rotary is accepting food items for their backpack program. And that's generally packaged stuff in cheese and crackers and, you know, things that are in a self-contained that they can put in the backpack, and a child that maybe doesn't have much to eat at home has got a little something to get them through the weekend. It's a great program. If you have any questions, call the Volunteer Center. I'm sure they would be able to help you. Going to be some brutal weather, or it's gonna be close to 10 below over the weekend, a couple of days. So take care of your pets. Look out for seniors who live near you who may not have adequate heating, and just check and make sure they're okay. And don't forget the Big Chill, January 29th, along with the Best in Bowl, and then that night, the Polar Bear Express Pub Crawl. Again, all that stuff is on Facebook. It's on the Big Chill website. Great chance for you to get out and that, and support the Rotary and the Chamber of Commerce, and kind of a fun day. You know, you can, you can be down there in the morning and watch the goofballs, excuse me, but the people who are thermally challenged jump in the water, and then you can go in and get a little something to eat from our best restaurants, and then at night, you can do the bar to bar crawl around the village and, and play poker. That you get a card at every place, and there's prizes for the winners, and I think prize for the worst hand of all. So a lot of things to look forward to, things to do. You know, I know it's winter time and we're stuck with the chance for you to get out a little bit, okay? Move on to department heads. We'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I just would mention, Mayor, that the zoning board of appeals had a very good meeting this, with not business, so it was more of a training meeting, but we did discuss a lot of things, and there is gonna be, they have some ideas on legislation, and Greg could talk about that as well, but what I would do is, once Greg and I put that together, I can just go ahead and either send it to you or send it out to the entire board. Generally speaking, legislation doesn't get proposed from outside the board members, but we can, we can put that together, and they've come up with some good ideas for some things.
With recommendations from, from you and Greg, you know, help us work with it.
Okay, other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Very good, and just wanted to welcome your cohort, Joe Forteschi. We don't get to see Joe all the time, but it's always nice to have him on board.
Yeah, I'm going to be away in February, and Joe will be helping me out and sitting in on, on the meeting, so I thought it would be a good idea for him to attend this meeting, and then we can, you know, copy him on all the emails, and we'll stay in touch with things.
Very good, thank you. Good to see you, Joe.
You do, Mayor.
Move on to code officer, Greg.
One of the biggest things I want to remind individuals, if your residential property or commercial property adjoins a public sidewalk, those sidewalks are required to be cleared. They should be cleared the entire width of the sidewalk, and they should be cleared so that people with disabilities can pass. I was out looking today, and there were many sidewalks that didn't look like they'd been touched yet, so want to make sure that individuals understand that they are responsible for the shoveling the sidewalks in front of their properties. And yes, Bob and I and the zoning board and the planning board, we're working on a few different items that they want to recommend to the board for a couple of changes. And there's something that, you know, Chuck and I wanted to present to the board as well regarding some maintenance, you know, issues that we may have, so for, for sidewalks and things, just to, you know, tighten up our code, make sure that it works for the public safety. And other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Very good, thanks Greg. Village clerk, Jody. Nice to see you.
Well, stick to the agenda.
All righty. You had your big chance.
Yeah, sorry.
Move on to treasurer, Mark Baker.
Just a couple of real quick things. One, I wanna say farewell to Mark Wilder and, and thank him for his service to the village for so long, and, and on this board especially, and on the DPW, and with the things that, that he does. We've been friends for most of our lives. Our families have been friends, and he's one of the people who probably convinced me that through a lot of encouraging feedback about this board and this group that, to, to do the treasurer thing, so thank you, Mark. I will, I'll miss you being here, and you know, I'm sure I'll see you around Liverpool. And the other thing is tomorrow, I will be completely off the grid, at least in, well, no, for the whole day. So I'm having a little harmless medical procedure that you have to have every 10 years or five years, depending on what happens to the last one you had, so. So, yeah.
This is the worst part of it tonight, usually.
Not yet, right after the meeting.
No, that was smart.
Yeah, so I will let you know, there were two different preps I could have got, and one of them, I would have to start at one o'clock this afternoon, and I said I couldn't. So they said the other one, you can wait till eight o'clock at night, but the co-pay is like 150 bucks. So I just wanted you to know, I'm, I paid the co-pay. I was gonna expense it back to the village, but I decided that would not be
Yeah.
cool.
Might not work its way through the vouchers.
I could see, could see Bruce not signing that check, but, so the rest, that's it for me tonight.
Okay, move on to the senior center, Ruth Troy.
Just to echo a little bit of what the mayor said, we have distributed most of the, the test kits we have. We do have a handful left, so if you had, haven't gotten one yet, you would need one right now that they're there for you. Also, the mayor mentioned the website. There is also a telephone number for folks that don't have computer access or aren't comfortable with that. So we can provide that if you want to call the senior center, and also a TTY number for anyone that might be hearing impaired, and that that would be helpful for. Other than that, unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, Ruth, can you clarify who's actually getting test kits from Canton Woods?
Yep, the, the test kits from Canton Woods are going to seniors who are in some way under our umbrella or known to us. And I'm actually keeping a spreadsheet, so we have some tracking, but they're going to the seniors who are known to us. And so far, so good.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to Public Works, Chuck.
Yeah, there's a couple, a couple of things. Out to our dome well plan on 370, we're just getting some phone calls of what's going on out there. We're, we're just doing some service work on our wells, or some crane up there, and looks like there's a lot going on that, that should be wrapped up pretty much next week. It's gone well. All the Christmas lights are down, except for the snowflakes, the tree is down, all the different lights on, trails are down. We usually leave the snowflakes up till after the polar plunge. Plowing, we're into the plowing now, and of course, it's been busy with the, with the storms. And if I could just have the residents, you just, you need to keep your garbage can enough off the road. A lot of times, people like to put it on the road, and the plow can't get by, and the plow hits them. And we have to keep the road open. One of the, one of the guys took a video of going down if they missed everyone, and it was just a zigzag down the whole road. We had to come back and, and clear the road again. So try to keep your garbage cans on your property, or just keep it in so that the plow can get by. It makes it, makes it much more easier. We're gonna try to move some snow. If it doesn't, if it doesn't snow tonight, we're gonna try to move some of the snowbanks down the business district. We're gonna start right around three this morning, get some of that picked up and moved out of the way. Starting to get ready for the Big Chill. We've done some plowing down to the park, and we gotta get the, the heat on in the buildings next week, and get, get some of that taken care of. Other than that, unless there are questions, we'll stick to the agenda.
And Chuck was saying to me the other day that, that they understand that when they, we plow streets, snow is gonna get left in the end of people's driveways. It just, there's no way not to do that. And nobody does it on purpose. I mean, I guarantee you, as the mayor, I get as much snow in the end of my driveway as anybody in the village gets in their driveway. I mean, it's not like they can say, well, we'll just skip a few of these, you know, we won't get in close to the driveways, because we gotta get the streets clean, and if you have to drive through it to get out in the morning.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Dick. And, and one of the biggest problems are corner houses. And when the, when the plow comes around the corner, they pretty much get the snow from most of the street. When they come around the corner, their first driveway just gets socked. And I live on a corner, you know, I get it from the village pile, I get it from the state pile, but that just is the way it is. But we get, we get a, a fair amount of, of, of people that are just pretty much are really upset because we come around and fill the driveway, and then there just is no choice. But, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Levincheck.
Thank you, Mayor. We have been, over the last two, two and a half weeks, have been dealing with a little bit of a COVID situation, including myself and two other members about two, two and a half weeks ago, and now I've got a couple more people that are, that are down at the present time with COVID that we're, that we're dealing with, so you know, I guess if there's a fortunate thing, it's that it's kind of been a little bit staggered, and that it hasn't just hit the entire department all at once. So that's where we're at, and then just wanted to echo some of Treasurer Baker's comments regarding Mark Wilder. Mark's been on the board a long time, and throughout my time as chief, and appreciate his guidance and wisdom. He's been on the negotiating team for a number of years now, and I've had to work well with him there, and certainly wish him all the best and appreciate his real service to the village. Nobody's getting, getting rich as a village trustee, that's for sure, for the time that, that he put in, and I just want to personally thank him for everything he's done.
I would, I would echo some of that. I wanted to wait till everybody else had a chance to say something. Mark and I came on the board at the same, at the same time. So, you know, he's, for the first five, six, seven years, Mark sat right next to me. I sat between him and Bruce. Can you imagine that? That was, that was the two stages of the board, and one on each side of me. I've known Mark.
Giving you a set of brains.
Yeah. But I've known Mark since he was a high school athlete in Beeville, and always had a lot of respect for him. Lived next door to his family for a while, loved the Wilders, and the best part about Mark is that he's not afraid to ask the question. The question that doesn't always gonna have the answer that everybody wants, but the answer, the question that needs to be asked. And it's really been special with him that we have somebody who has an expertise when it comes to our well situation, protecting our wells, sewage situation, because it's very closely related to the work he does. So it was really nice having our own expert. You know, we could, we could turn to Mark and, and get an initial judgment on what was going on, and I know that I always respected that. I admired the fact that he knew so much about that stuff. And I, I, I learned some things listening to him. And just, I'm gonna miss him, because he was, his, his big line was, it's our fiduciary responsibility for our taxpayers to take care of their money. And everything he did was with that in mind, and I think taxpayers should be the one to be the most disappointed that he's leaving, because he looked out for them, not the, the rest of the people didn't, but he was vocal about it. So all I want to do is wish Mark all the best, and maybe move back to Beeville in a couple of years, and we'll have a spot on the board for you.
If you want me to comment now, I can. I mean, I could wait till later in the, I, I appreciate the, the sentiments, the nice comments. And it's not because Mark Baker's joining that I'm on the way out. I'll just mention that. So yeah, I mean, I, I think back, I've really enjoyed my time. I got on the board because we had, the village had some property that had some environmental stigma associated with it down on Lock Street. And, and there was a real, I guess, a paralysis at the time on what do we do? And, and by joining the board, I was able to help kind of lead the process to do the environmental investigations and, and then get the property ultimately up for sale and, and sold. And that helped us during a timeframe, helped the village during a timeframe when we needed the money. So, I mean, we always need the money, but it, it does benefit the taxpayers to have people like myself and, and, and the other board members on the board who watch, watch their pennies. So appreciate that. I'm gonna miss it. I am gonna miss working with everybody. I certainly learned a lot of things. Takes a while to, to get to a point where you're able to talk intelligently about items. I'm not sure I still understand everything, but you know, this, it takes a while, so my, my email's not changing, my personal one, so if people have questions, please reach out. And yeah, I, it was a set of circumstances that were outside of my control why I'm, why I'm leaving, and why I'm, why I'm resigning early with inheriting a property, and so maybe in a couple of years, I will move back. I did inquire on, on the status of property on the locks, on Lock Street, when it's, when the private residences are gonna be constructed, and, and they're off for a little while, but who knows? Maybe I'll sell this place in a while and come back.
My term ends in two years.
Don't get any ideas.
We need, we need you, Bruce.
All right, thank you, Mark. We'll move on to, let's see, we have somebody trying to get in. It's probably Jim Serenkowski. Okay. Yep, hi Jim. Hang on for a minute, you're up, you're up, not this one, the next one. We have pending business, item seven. Can I get a motion to adopt the proposed village budget for the fiscal year March 1st, 2022 through February 28th, 2023? Bruce Stebbins and Mark Wilder. Any questions, comments on the budget? I think our taxpayers will be very happy to know that there's been a 4% decrease in the tax rate, which will hopefully help people with the fact that their assessments are higher. So we took a lot of work, and we appreciate our newcomer, Mark Baker, as treasurer, getting right in and really getting his hands dirty and kind of dissecting a lot of our budget and making some real improvements on it, and with the help of some of the board members, you know, Bruce is always finding detail, little details, and I know Anna always wanted Bruce to make sure, look at it before she's, we talked about it, and I'm sure Mark is not disappointed that Bruce gave it a good once-over. And it's a good budget, I think. And again, Mark has streamlined some things and looking forward to what he's gonna do for us for the next year or two. So we have a, a motion and a second to approve the budget. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. And thanks to everybody. The budget is never an easy thing. I mean, we cut, we slash, we move, we and hopefully at the end, we think we've got a, a budget that's fair. And there's a lot of things in the budget as far as work projects and things like that. So hopefully this will be a good year for us. Move on to new business. Item A, can I get a motion to accept the retirement with regret of Police Sergeant Jim Serenkowski effective January 29th, 2022? Andy? Megan? We have a motion and a second. We have Officer Serenkowski here. Is there something you would like to say to the board, Jim?
Mayor, can I speak first?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, before Jim speaks, I'd just like to kind of give a quick synopsis for those folks out in the public that might be watching or watch later on of, of Jim's public service career, and especially that here in Baldwinsville. Jim started with us back on January 1st, 2005. And prior to that, he had served five years as a deputy with the Anadog County Sheriff's Office. So he came to us with, with five, five years of experience there, and prior to that, he had, he had served quite honorably with the United States Air Force. And since Jim's time with us for a number of years, he served in the reserves. And he's also a veteran of a foreign war, so he has pretty much spent his entire adult life in public service, either in the military or in law enforcement. And I think that's quite, quite commendable in this day and age. For us, in, in our department, Jim really made a name for himself in, in a couple of very important areas for us. First is, is he was our primary defensive tactics and taser instructor for our organization. And those are two key roles for us. Obviously, whenever we might use force on an individual, whether it be a taser, whether it be hands-on force, that is a lot of liability. There's a big risk of someone getting hurt, both the suspect and ourselves. And Jim's done an exemplary job over the years of, of keeping our officers up to date on the latest techniques and, and ways to stay, stay safe. The other area is, is one that's kind of behind the scenes, but it's no less vital to an organization such as ours or any law enforcement organization, and Jim, and Jim served as our evidence officer. And what that means is any piece of evidence that comes in, it's Jim's responsibility to properly catalog that and then store it safely and securely. We have an evidence room upstairs at the police department, and I can tell you that it's not a big room, and it has the, the potential of everything being in place, but something being very difficult to find. I can assure you, because oftentimes during the daytime, the only people that have keys to that evidence room are Jim and myself. And I was tasked, the DA's office would call, and I'd have to go upstairs and find evidence. The previous evidence officer, who will go unnamed, she had, she had her own way of doing it. She knew where everything was. Everything was there. There was no doubt about that. But finding it would, would prove somewhat problematic for someone like me that didn't know her, her cataloging system. She'd been in the Marine Corps, so maybe, maybe something a little different. But Jim just did an outstanding job of that. In that evidence room, everything is shipshape in there, and I can tell you from an administrative point of view, you need someone that, that is well organized, that is, is responsible, that doesn't require a lot of supervision to, to perform that job, and Jim certainly manned that, that duty very capably. He is the very first, was the very first Medal of Honor recipient in our organization back in 2007 for his actions in, in a fire right across the street of the police department, where he saved some people's lives along with the sheriff's deputy, and incredible amount of bravery displayed during that incident. And he was also named our Police Officer of the Year for 2022. And, uh, he was also named our police officer of the year, uh, for two thousand and seven, uh, voted by the members of the department. Uh, back in, uh, two thousand and fourteen, after Lieutenant Tom Leroy left, uh, Jim was promoted to sergeant. And, uh, Jim has served in that role, uh, ever since. He, uh, supervised, uh, what we call D-watch, so. He came in at night, uh, to work at seven at night and worked till three in the morning. So when most people are, you know, just winding down their night and heading off to bed, that's when Jim came to work. And, uh, he kept the people of the of the of the village of Baldwinsville, uh, as safe as he could during during that time period. And, uh, uh, his retirement's gonna be a big loss for the department. Um, and, uh, we certainly wish him and his wife and his children, uh, nothing but, uh, the best, uh, in the future.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Dick, can I say a quick thing too?
Sure, Chuck, go ahead.
Yeah, I've known Jim, um, for a lot of years, all my years in the fire department. I know Jim since he first started and the ambulance corps. Um, fire department, the ambulance corps worked very closely with the police department on some of the, some of the bad calls and and, uh, Jim was always there. He was always, always great to work with. Um, in my time with the DPW, um, he's worked nights a lot, uh, all the the big, the major snowstorms, he'd call me and say, okay, what are we doing tonight? What are you guys coming in? Just great to work with. Uh, I know I called you at your last stage, Jim, and, uh, wished you farewell and I wish you the best and, uh. And, uh, I'll miss you and and, uh, and I'm sure a lot of people will also, but I just wanted to say that.
And I will, I too will miss Jim, uh. I think, you know, uh. His family was involved in the, uh, the tree lighting ceremony, uh, working over at the library. Uh, I don't know if they were handing out donuts or whatever, but it was nice to see one of our officers, I'm sure. That could have been on the road working that night, but but he was handing out donuts and and. I think it's nice for people in our community to see police officers. Acting as just another human being involved with a community event. Um, I've really interesting first time I ever met Jim, and he probably doesn't remember it. I was out walking and I was walking by the front of the high school and there's that little wall. Where the kids sit and wait for the bus to come and there was a backpack sitting there. And it was right at the time there had been some bombings. Of, you know, people finding bags and suddenly the bag blew up and I s- I'm not touching it, but I'm not letting anybody else touch it, so I called. The, called nine-one-one and Jim showed up, so I thought, well, he's probably gonna get somebody to come and. You know, I don't know what he was gonna do. I, you know, I don't do that stuff he does. So he, uh, came up and just very. Deliberately went over and picked up the bag and opened it up and it was somebody's school bag who obviously was waiting for the bus and had forgotten it. Uh, but my. You know, the old George Bush, if you see something, say something and I I saw it and was not, you know, what if somebody's trying to hurt some kids? So Jim came and was my hero that night. And, uh, since then, we've, we've, uh, had a nice relationship. I'd be out in the yard in the evening and he'd be driving by and stop. Two, three minutes, tell you, Ben Mayor, blah, 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 and, uh, I just. I'm I'm disappointed that you're not gonna be with us, but I'm very happy that you're gonna have time for you and your family, so good luck and, uh, thanks for everything you've done for the village, Jim. And this is your chance, if you wanna address the board or. You gotta unmute. You have to unmute, Jim.
Oh, is this better?
That's better.
Much better. Um, I I don't have anything prepared, but I appreciate what everybody said. Um, the backpack, I think, was born in my reckless days, so. I don't know if I do that, uh, but, uh. Um, I appreciate that, uh, the chief, I appreciate everything you said, uh, everything you've done for me, you've allowed me to do. Um, you know. I I I really do appreciate you, you know, the training that you provided, uh, you know, the the support, you know, in my career. Exceled not only because of, you know, what I was able to provide, but you opened some doors for me, so I appreciate that. And Chuck, it's always been a pleasure working with you and your DPW guys. I actually missed, uh, working days, uh. Not to, you know, I enjoyed working with you guys and it was a little camaraderie, you know, having lunch or, you know, with the bus garage people. Um, you know, you don't get that on nights, you're kind of isolated by yourself, working in the dark all the time. Um, you know, so, but I just want to thank the village, Andy, uh, who hired me, appreciate that. Um. And, you know, it's been an honor to serve the village and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Alright, we have a motion and a second. With regrets, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried? And again, Jim, we wish you nothing but the best.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to item two. Can I get a motion to renew the group life insurance coverage through Renaissance Life and Health Insurance Company, New York at the current rate effective? Four-one, twenty-twenty-two. This is the plan that had replaced loyalty to life for the police department and also ensures board members and department heads. Megan? And, uh, Mark Wilder, I I see your hand up. Uh, any questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Um, item C, can I get a motion to appoint Mary Krego? Join and Joanna Taylor as election inspectors? For the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two village election at a pay rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Ruth Seaco? And Megan? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carry, that's, that will be from twelve to nine at village hall. For those who aren't familiar, I mean, we we sure hope that. The COVID doesn't interfere with people getting out to vote. We'd like to have a a a strong. Representation of our village and so we know that people. Are interested, so. Item D, that's a tough one. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation with regret of village trustee Mark Wilder effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two? Mark makes that motion? Seconded by Megan? Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make?
I was thinking maybe we couldn't make the motion, but he fooled us.
Mark, Mark, real quick, I I had mentioned it last meeting also, but it's gonna be a a big hit for the DPW. I mean, you've you've been, you've been great. I don't know, uh. It's, what we do is a lot different, um, then we're gonna miss you, so if you want to come back. I'm sure there'll be open arms.
It's a public meeting, right?
Appreciate that, Chuck.
The DPW meetings are open to the public, so.
That's right.
Any meeting.
So if you get bored, Mark, you're more than welcome to come and convince with the crew.
I'll I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
You know, I I I'll add one comment that it's not bad. I I know we have a couple of interested. Uh, candidates to to run in the next election. And and it's not a bad thing to get new blood into the board as well, some younger people and so. So sometimes it's tough to give up a little bit on the experienced end, but, uh, I I'm just happy that there are some people that are interested. And because I'd feel worse if there weren't, uh, some candidates, uh, you know. I I'm just sitting here thinking that. My parents moved into the, into the village, into the village proper in nineteen sixty-two, so that's sixty years. And, uh, before that, we were in Seneca Knowles for a couple of years, probably three years. Um, so pretty much my whole life, except for college and, uh. I'm living, I'm gonna be living now in my house that my mother owned, so there's some continuity there, but. Uh, yeah, I'll miss the village, uh, but I'll I'll, I can still come in occasionally and, uh. Meet people for a libation or something and we'll go from there. But thank you very much. Uh, I'm I, I've enjoyed my time with all of the board members. Through the last, I guess it's twelve years or so and, um. So there's been some different people involved, but a lot of continuity as well, so. Um, thank you to everybody, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we have a motion and a second. With regrets, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. The die is cast. Um, anything else that we need to address before we go to executive session? Seeing none, can I get a motion to move into two executive sessions? Um, personnel matter and negotiations? Can I get a motion? Megan? A second? Ruth Seaco? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Nay? I don't see, I don't think there'll be any action taken, so. I don't think there's anything that's actionable. So we will move into executive session.